Councilmember Brennan?
Present.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Supervisor Foie?
Here.
Mayor Morgan?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Present.
Mayor Washburn?
And Supervisor Saragosa?
Here.
Great, we have a quorum.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any, we have the minutes of the meeting from June 14th, any corrections? Any, great, thank you. In a second, okay, any objections? Seeing none, unanimous, move to any agenda review, any changes, questions? Seeing none, we'll move through that to our item six, our board comments. All right, we were all talked out from June 14th, there we go, good.
Just one quick one on the, last week, Councilmember Sharkey and myself testified, as did Mike, at a CARB hearing regarding the missile, well, the missile test range and the ocean-going vessel channel of Santa Barbara and the amendment to the CARB ruling of 2009 that addressed an issue of the ocean-going vessels creating risk by going outside of the Channel Islands to ferry through the missile test range and become target practice. Bottom line is that the amendment by CARB was an excellent amendment to address that issue, to create a 24-mile zone that then, in essence, should put them back into the Santa Barbara Channel and continue their excellent work, frankly, with the vessel association and the industry in going to the clean fuel usage, and that was the intent of the CARB hearing, to clean up the air quality along the coast. Mike addressed that in this board's unanimous letter that was sent in support of the amended action, and it was voted unanimously by the CARB members to support that. So, it was a good step, obviously benefits both our coastal corridor for clean air and also the encroachment issue for the test range for the naval base in Chirac County. Mr. Sharkey, anything?
You said it all.
Thank you both for taking the time to go out there, I think it was very, both, as you said, economically but also from air quality, it was a huge win, so good job. Mr. Morgan?
So, I'm glad to see now that some of those are still coarse that want to use the bad stuff, will go way around, but very few of those will now, huh?
Well, one of the creative things in the next step in the rule development for CARB will be looking at the speed of the vessels, and Long Beach and LA have already moved to give incentives to the transit operators to slow their vessels down and get a break on their birthing fees, basically, is as simple as I can put it, so, anyway, I was appreciated that Mike was there, spoke again for this board and gave good input on it.
Interestingly enough, I think exponentially the difference of the fuel burned and speed, I think, was pretty amazing. At our basin-wide meeting last week, the numbers came out, going from 24 knots to 12 knots, reduced to something like almost 70%, 60 or 70%. Wasn't like, I mean, so, in terms of, it just creates more, they're not getting, they're not doing anything, you know, better, they're just, the big problem has been getting to their, to their birthing times, and that's been the biggest, so it's nice to hear that the ports are going to be willing to work with them, because obviously, everybody's going to be in the same boat, so.
Right, in the same boat.
Good.
And there's already, just with the change in the clean fuel, the tonnage of cleaning up the air is, we might want to say 80,000, I don't know what we call what the figure was, but it was significant.
It's an 80% reduction in toxic diesel particulate and an 80% reduction in sulfur dioxide.
Already.
And what percentage is that of our air pollution here in the county?
You know what, since those are both attainment pollutants, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but it's significant. When you look at sulfur dioxide, certainly, the largest source was the vessels following the coast.
I thought one of the interesting comments that came out last week from Terry Dressler, who just retired in Santa Barbara, was that Santa Barbara had some of the cleanest air on record when the boats were on side. Now, recognizing it created another problem, but it was, while there wasn't direct data, they just said, hey, this time they were outside, the data's here, the air is clear, we've never seen it cleaner, and all of a sudden, so, I think that was one of the huge aha's, so there was a, while it wasn't directly measured in terms of data, but the fact that the overall data showed this is a pretty good indication of why we were trying to address the boat issue, I think, more than anything else. And obviously, we know the downstream costs of health issues, and trying to explain that to folks, and people don't see the boats here, but yet, the particulate matter's onshore, and of course, then, we've got those levels up, it kind of, it kind of burdens some of the folks that are in the business onshore, because we already have this coming onshore, so if we can direct that, we can certainly direct some of these issues a little clearer.
Mr. Chairman. Also, the other good side of this CARB thing is that it's going to help the naval base in Chirac County, the encroachment issue, and, you know, we have a tremendous amount of jobs and payroll, and it helps, you know, the testing ranges tremendously, too. So, that's the other side of it.
And then, quickly, I wanted to say that we have a huge opportunity here, generally speaking, the environmental community certainly has been trying to get the boats to slow down, we have the blue whales, we've got a number of more wild migration inside the channel, so moving at 12 knots, you know, granted, if a big boat hits a whale, it's a ship, yeah, you're right.
My father was a fisherman.
Okay, there you go, it's a ship, you're right, a boat is, yeah, thank you, it's a ship, for sure, but it obviously gives the opportunity for crustaceans and everybody to get out of the way, you know, the whales and everybody, to be able to avoid that, as opposed to getting ship strikes, so.
Before we leave that, since a couple of questions came up, I believe if you check the CARB website, and they still be up there, there are some graphs and charts that show where the plumes are and the effect of ships going outside the island and where that plume is and what the impacts are onshore, so if anybody's really motivated, you should get on the CARB website and find that stuff.
Nice.
And one last thing, although they had a brief discussion on the next rulemaking for the reduction in speed, there was concerns raised that, to be very cognizant of the unintended consequences of, again, possibly pushing vessels outside into the test range rather than getting their agreement to slow down, staff recognized that, Chairperson Nichols did, so staff is already aware that they don't want to create what they did with 2009, the unintended consequence, so that will have to be addressed.
Great, well, thank you, Board, for the comments, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, it's our public hearing regarding the adoption of the Air Pollution Control District's proposed fiscal year budget, 2011-2012. Mr. Villegas.
Chair Brennan, members of the board, I'm Mike Villegas, Air Pollution Control Officer. I'll keep this short, because we went over our proposed budget in detail at our June 14th meeting. Excluding $300,000 for contingencies, the district is projecting a net cost of approximately However, the proposed budget contains a conservative estimate of $109,000 in revenue from fines and penalties. When you look at past performance over the past five years, fines and penalties have averaged $300,000 per year, so in reality, the district is probably looking at an additional $190,000 in revenue from the source. Therefore, we should be looking at a balanced budget, and there's a chance that we'll actually see a net savings in the upcoming fiscal year. Total proposed expenditures are down by $165,000 from the current fiscal year. Salaries and benefits are reduced by approximately $130,000 due to staffing changes. Services supplies are up by $107,000, mostly due to an increase in the cost allocation plan where we pay for county services. Fixed assets are down by $143,000 from the current fiscal year. Our revenues are expected to decrease by $140,000, and this is mostly because of the fact, under a state regulation, some older, higher-emitting diesel engines had to be removed from service during the past year, and now they're being replaced with cleaner diesels and lower emission fees. We also have lower revenue from our interest earnings just due to the state of the economy. We only have one increment to request, and once again, the district has $25,000 available for a motor vehicle incentive program. Approving of the funding today does not include actually approving the program, we would return to your board at a later date with an implementation plan. I'd just like to point out to your board that we have receiving interest in electric vehicle infrastructure projects from the County of Ventura's General Services Agency and the local Clean Cities Coalition, and that may be a very good use of the funds. Your board's standing committee reviewed the budget at their March meeting and recommended adoption to your board. Your board's approval would also include adoption of the special revenue fund portion of the budget, and this fund handles our pass-through grants where revenue and expenditures are always balanced. That concludes my presentation, I'll be happy to take questions.
Member Ramirez?
Yes, thank you very much for that, I just have a question about, since we last met and discussed, any changes from state or federal budget that you could note?
Well, I didn't get to read the article, but I saw the headline that we're headed for, it looks like an all-cuts state budget, so we'll be keeping an eye on state subvention, it's only $200,000, but it's, you know, would be significant cut to the district. The more troubling is if they tried to pull some of the DMV funds we receive and use those for other purposes, although they are protected right now by current legislation. The federal budget, no update since then, we're still waiting to see what happens with the federal grant reallocation.
Thank you.
Supervisor, councilman? Okay. Pleasure of the board on this item, we've reviewed this and detailed before.
Mr. Chairman, we, like you say, we reviewed this and asked a lot of our questions, and I think he's had to put up with our little stuff, so I think today I'd like to move that we accept the staff's recommendation and pass this. I make that motion.
Okay, seconded by Member Sharkey. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, is this as a budget, if you could, please.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Supervisor Foie?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Supervisor Parks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ramirez?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharkey?
Yeah.
Supervisor Saragosa?
Yes.
And Chair Brennan?
Yes.
I would also note that the Air Pollution Control District also benefited from the reduction in ISF fees that occurred countywide.
Yes.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Board, we'll move to our next item, Mr. Villegas?
Yes, today I have a retirement service aboard for our deputy air pollution control officer, Mr. Keith Duval, if you'd like to come up. And, well, this is headed close to it, we're 48 hours from a very sad day for the district, we're also 48 hours from a very happy day for Mr. Duval, so, Keith has been with the district nearly 30 years, and I think one of the reasons that the district is known as the pragmatic district on the coast is Mr. Duval. His leadership has always been there, he never lost sight of the quest to protect public health and improve air quality, but he also knew that setting appropriate fines for appropriate violations was a part of being a pragmatic district, and he certainly knows that there's times when there's mitigating circumstances to reduce a proposed penalty, he also knows there's times to turn over a case to the district attorney or the state attorney general. I'm going to miss him on a personal note, Mr. Duval was my mentor, I worked for him when I started here at the district, and I don't believe I would have achieved my position and my career without the guidance of Mr. Duval, he's going to be sorely missed here, a lot, a breadth of knowledge, he was a permit engineer, he managed the rule development section and the compliance section, and probably his parting gift to the district was a big part of why we have such a large fund balance. When we hit dire financial straits about one year into my tenure, Mr. Duval agreed to take over some additional divisions that allowed us to reduce our management staffing levels, which was a huge cost savings to the district, and I think the rest of the employees, we all owe him a great gratitude for that, because they're securing their positions now, we can concentrate on our mission, not worrying about finances, and with that, I just want to thank Mr. Duval for his many years of service and great leadership here at the district.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, it's really been an honor to serve the Air Pollution Control District and your board, and especially the citizens of Ventura County, and I've always tried to keep that in mind, that I was serving the citizens here, and being born and raised in Ventura meant a lot to me. We've seen dramatic improvements in the county's air quality in the years that I've been here, and it's due to just a great team of people. A lot of people have been in and out of the district over the years that I've been here, and a lot of hard-working professionals, and everybody was dedicated to cleaning up the county's air quality, and it's just a real honor to have been a part of that and to wake up in the morning and see the clear skies that we get so often, so, thank you for your support, your board was really a big part of that, going, supporting our rules and regulations, state regulations, to, you know, clean up ships and things like that, and approving our rules and regulations, so, thank you.
Thank you. And now, we'll wait for an opening on the advisory board, where you can probably sit in, right? Any comments?
Yeah, I would like to say, Mr. Duval, been a local resident for, you know, as you said, born and raised here, and just two things, one, I really want to thank you for reminding us it's about the mission, you know, and it's cleaning up the air, and a lot, lots of times in a bureaucracy, you can get, you can get lost in all kinds of other things, but from the very beginning, when I spoke with you many years ago, it was way before I came on the board, it was real clear, you were real focused on that, and two, not everybody gets to work at a job that has such a clear public benefit, and I hope you feel good about having both had that opportunity and been able to play a real big role in that, so, thank you and good luck, and keep the good of Ventura County as part of those things that you're working on with your free time now that you have out there, but thank you very much, Keith, you've been great to work with, really appreciate.
Mr. Chair, if I might, too, thank you, Keith, and well said, Mike, pragmatic, but I've always appreciated that, as has been said, you knew the mission, the work, the, sometimes it's very tough work, in the early days, we had significant disagreements and always willing to sit at the table and listen and work through those with the regulated community in addition to keeping the goals in mind, so I appreciated your calm demeanor, your ability to listen and work with the citizens of the county, thank you.
Thank you.
Good public service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Michael, move to the next item, public hearing regarding adoption of proposed new rule 2613, new source review.
Yes, prevention of significant deterioration, or as we refer to it as PSD, is a sister companion to the federal, it's a federal program, and it's kind of a sister to the federal new source review program, but there are some differences. New source review applies to pollutants for which you're designated non-attainment, so in Ventura County for ozone, federal new source review deals with reactive organic compounds and nitrogen oxides. Prevention of significant deterioration deals with pollutants where you actually attain the standard or are unclassified, so it deals with, at the federal level, sulfur dioxide, particulate matter, carbon monoxide, and other applicable pollutants. It's similar to new source review in that if you have a major new source or a major modification, you're required to implement best available control technology for those pollutants subject to PSD. It differs from new source review in that new source review requires you to provide emission reduction offsets for any increase after you've already applied best available control technology. What PSD does is it requires an analysis to make sure that there's not a significant degradation of air quality with that attainment pollutant. The other main difference is the pollution thresholds. Currently, federal new source review would apply to a major source, and we're currently a serious non-attainment area, at a threshold of 50 tons per year for ROC or NOx. With PSD for the applicable pollutants, for most of the applicable pollutants, the threshold for a major modification or a new major facility is 250 tons per year, with the exception of greenhouse gases where the threshold, as you're aware, is 100,000 tons per year of greenhouse gases. Currently, for Ventura County, this program is implemented by the U.S. EPA out of their office in Region 9 in San Francisco. At this time, there are no stationary sources in Ventura County subject to PSD requirements or that have a PSD permit, and since I've been at the district, we have not done a PSD permit, and that's 22 and a half years, so these are quite infrequent. Even with the addition of greenhouse gases, we're not seeing a PSD source in this foreseeable future in this county. However, EPA is encouraging local agencies to take over implementation of this program. The most straightforward way to do that is for us to adopt the federal requirements by reference, and that's what we're proposing to do with new rule 2613. We would be repealing our existing PSD rule, which is really a reference stating that if you have a PSD facility, you need to get your permit from EPA, that's 2610, we would repeal that and take over implementation. There's several benefits to having the district run the program locally, and there is the potential that we could have a large new PSD facility in the county, I mean, right now we have two aging power plants in Ormond Beach and Mandalay where they're running into the once-through water issue, the once-through cooling issue, and there's the possibility that in the future, where you need electrical generation, you know, Genon may look at saying, let's replace those boilers with state-of-the-art turbines to generate electricity as a baseload facility, that would probably become a PSD facility. One of the benefits to having the district do the permitting is timeliness. Currently, it takes several years for EPA to complete a PSD permit, and that, there's kind of a twofold thing, they don't do these permits very often, and they have very limited staff. And matter of fact, I don't know if you heard of the Jobs Permitting Act that went, was recently passed by the House, dealing with outer continental shelf permits, that stemmed from the fact that a PSD permit took too long off the coast of Alaska. We could do the permitting in a much more timely manner at our level. The other major advantage is that if there were an appeal of a PSD facility, and then many times there are, because they, they're very large facilities and some residents would, you know, potentially appeal any approval, at the federal level, when EPA is implementing it, any appeal goes to the Environmental Appeals Board in Washington, D.C., and it can take a couple of years to get a decision on that permit action. If we were locally implementing it, it would go to the district's hearing board, and you'd probably have a resolution in a matter of months. There is a financial impact, well, it's a minor financial impact, if the district does the permitting, we would assess our permit processing fees. One thing EPA does not have, a mechanism to assess any fees for permit processing, but it's more than offset by the fact that you'd receive a permit years earlier, if you were building a new power plant, you had to pay the district for the permit processing, but you could get it a few years earlier, hands down, and that's one thing the advisory committee saw, that would be a better outcome for the regulated community. The other thing that's really not in there is EPA might not assess fees, however, with their limited staff, where you came into the district with a permit application, we would do the best available control technology analysis, for example, whereas if you're going into EPA with their limited staff, that might fall to the permit E to hire a consultant to do that, so you might not be paying EPA, but you'd probably be paying an environmental consultant, and to put it bluntly, our service rates are definitely going to be lower than an outside consultant. In summary, we had a workshop in September of last year, no negative comments, and April 26th of this year, the advisory committee unanimously recommended approval of the proposed rule action.
It all sounds good, Mike, giving it faster, I like the idea of getting it done faster, where they don't have to wait two years, that helps business, it helps get things accomplished. Will the EPA, though, still have a final say on it? I mean, even if we get this through and appeals and appeals over, it's all done, will the EPA still have a final say in it?
They would be reviewing the permit action.
Again?
They would review the back analysis, but there's timeframes on their review. So, once, it'd be very similar to our Title V program, we'd go out and we'd say, this is what we're going to do, we're going to issue this permit, they get 45 days to get back to us. There are timeframes for EPA review on these permits.
The reason I'm asking that question, you still want to put one part of bureaucracy on top of another, it still calls a two-year timeframe. If it is, it's fine, we're doing it, let them do it, and let them take the cost, and let's not do it, but if we're making it faster and more efficient, that's a different story.
Yeah, we are making, it would definitely be more timely.
Member Ramirez?
Thank you, Mr. Villegas, I would just like to comment, because you've discussed the two power plants on the Oxnard beaches, that, speaking for myself and not for any other member of our city council, I think that we'd like for you not to permit it, to keep going, and we'd like to share the burden with the other jurisdictions of the county, just as an aside, because it does impact our air, and Oxnard does have the burden, and we also have a third one attempting to go in, so, anything that continues in Oxnard, I think you might, you would definitely hear from the residents of Oxnard.
I would assume there'd be an appeal if, if there was a proposal such as that.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none for the questions, pleasure of the board on this item. Okay, seconded by Member Sharkey. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Great, unanimous, thank you, Board, appreciate it. Move to item 10. We're going to get our money's worth out of you before we let you go, aren't we? Okay, good.
Chair Brennan, members of the board, Keith Duval for the APCC. The district's hearing board is comprised of five members appointed by your board, and by state law, those members have to include two public members, a member from the legal profession, a doctor, and a professional engineer. The term of the professional engineer expired January 1st. We sent a memo to your board, we published an article in our Skyline's publication, and we issued a press release announcing the availability for people to apply for this position. The only applicant for the position was Mr. Gary Gasparino. Mr. Gasparino's registered professional engineer with extensive experience in civil engineering, and he has served on the hearing board since 2005. Your board's standing committee recommended that Mr. Gasparino be appointed to fill the engineer position, and the term of this position will be through December 31st, 2013. Therefore, we're recommending the appointment of Mr. Gasparino to the APCC hearing board.
Great, thank you, pleasure of the board. Tie goes to the runner, Mr. Morgan, I believe, one, okay? Any opposition? Seeing none, thank you, thank you, Keith, again. The next item, donation of surplus air monitoring shelter to the California Department and Parks and Recreation.
Yes, in an effort to streamline our monitoring operations and reduce costs to the regulated community, the Ventura monitoring site has been shut down. This action allows the district to reduce our costs and staff time with no adverse impact on our ability to protect public health. It also means we now have a surplus monitoring site shelter. The California Department of Parks and Recreation has asked that we actually donate the shelter to them, it's currently at Emma Wood State Beach. We have no use for the shelter, and it's very poor condition due to the fact it's been exposed to salt air for several years. Staff estimates the shelter as a surplus value of about $100, and also by donating the shelter, it would reduce costs to the district in the fact that we might not have to haul it away. Significant savings to us. Significant savings to us. Therefore, we're recommending that your board authorize us to donate this shelter to state parks.
Supervisor Parks moved approval, and seconded by supervisor Long.
Question, question, question. Why would the state want it?
They're going to use it to, I found out yesterday, they're going to use it to keep lost and found items.
Yeah, shelter, it's in bad shape? Okay.
Well, it's in bad shape when you're trying to protect electronic equipment. I mean, it's currently sealed up, but structurally, it's going to need, it would need to be replaced within a year or two.
If I remember, it's like a 40-foot roll-off or something?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just something, it's not, it's just a roll-off container that's obviously rusted an awful lot, but obviously our equipment's been deteriorated, so, and been taken off it, so, great. Any opposition? Seeing none, carries. Thank you, great job on saving us way more than 100 bucks hauling it off and getting a permit to dispose of it and yada, 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 we know how that goes. Thank you. Hey, item, next item. This is, oh boy, I know how much we love getting together, so we're going to have to cancel a couple gatherings, I don't know, I'm so excited, okay? I know there's no opposition to this item. Great, carries unanimously. And item 13, receive and file application.
Second.
Okay, supervisor Zaragosa, one, just by hair there, and seeing no opposition, that item carries also. And item 14, receive and file.
Second.
Okay.
And we have no standing committee.
Motion by member Morgan, and seconded by supervisor Zaragosa, and.
And we have no standing committee, right?
We have no standing committee, and we are done with the minutes, tell the work of this board till September. Thank you very much.